This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the town of North Haven.
Good evening. I'd like to call the May 13th, 2021 regular meeting of the North Haven Board of Ed of Education for order at 6:30 PM. We have several board members who are remotely, who are remote. The rest of us can be seen. Dot Logan is remote. Joe Salamini is remote and Goldie Adeli is remote. Goldie, you're there? You should be joining in any moment. So I'd like to call, take our first action item, which would be our consent agenda. The April 8th, 2021 Board of Ed Meeting Minutes. The retirement of the following people. Donna Bonita, special education teacher at Green Acres Elementary School. Diane Lizcano, social worker at Clintonville Elementary School. June Barzalowskis, social studies teacher at the high school. Melinda Proto, math teacher at North Haven Middle School. I would also like to make a motion to add an item to the consent agenda. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. The retirements came in after our agenda had been prepared, and that is for Art Miss Cornwell, an elementary art teacher; Laura Rosa Bianca, an intervention teacher at the North Haven Middle School; and Barbara Broza, English learning teacher. So may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
We saw a little more in the back.
Oh, more in the back? Oh, wow. Okay. We also have the non-renewals. Taylor Brockett, Nikki Zulika Ayu Capino, Megan Dooley, Amanda Craig, Emily Davidson, Riley Bathrick. And finally, a leave of absence for Krista Kaplan, a social studies teacher at North Haven Middle School. So may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
May I?
Yep, I was looking at you, Dot.
I think for the first time in a long time, I'm overwhelmed with the names of our retiring teachers. First of all, I'd like to congratulate them. They're ending their career after a very difficult year of the pandemic in and out of the classroom. I'd like to talk about all of them, but, you know, I know there's time constraints. But I would say my overall thought is they're kind people, great teachers. They've given so much to North Haven that in their own special way, they've had wonderful relationships with their colleagues and, of course, the students. And they truly will be missed. And, boy, this is a real tough one. Well, I always say, welcome to the other side.
Thanks, Dot. Thank you for all of them. Okay, well, let me see.
Anita, can I just add one thing, please?
Sure.
And I will be very, very quick. You know, kind of like what Dot said, this time of year is always tough because, you know, the year's wrapping up and we get our resignations that we know is not coming back. This year, one name in particular on this list struck me. Donna Benito is retiring from Green Acres. I had the privilege of having Mrs. Benito teach stepmother of my children as they went through the preschool program. She is a phenomenal, phenomenal, phenomenal teacher. It's a loss for the district. As losing all these teachers retired is a loss for the district. But Donna retiring struck me. I wish her all the best, as I know the board does. I wish all retirees the best. Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Were there any comments on the meeting minutes? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Before moving on to the items listed on the agenda, I'd like to take a moment to recognize several former North Haven Public School employees and staff members who have passed away within the last few months, within the last year. And I have several that I knew of and one or two that Joe's had helped me with. If I've missed anyone, can you please let me know? But of course, we have Mary Rarling, who was a former principal at Ridge Road School. Richard Nygro was a former music teacher, I believe, at North Haven Middle School. Sandra Bonito, a former teacher at North Haven High School. Both of those last two are people that I knew, teachers that I work with with my own children. And finally, Merrill Johnson, who was a former administrative assistant to the superintendent. I just felt we've had so many former employees and teachers who have made such a significant impact on North Haven Public Schools. I wanted to try and recognize those that I knew of.
Anita, may I add Sherman Khan was a music teacher on the elementary level. And I think he, I talked with him as well as Rich. And they were just fantastically talented and they saved children who were musically gifted or talented and maybe not academically paper and pencil people. And then, did you say Laura Sirasi, who was the gym teacher?
Oh, no.
At the middle school? We lost four retired teachers within 10 days recently. So I want to make sure we got all of them.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to defer to you because I bet you would know more than I would on reason. When I just knew about these four, but thank you, Dot. Once again, I did want to just point it out because they've been valuable to us. Okay, our next item on our agenda is our discussion concerning the retirement of the North Haven Public School's mascot caricature. But before we begin our discussion concerning the retirement of the mascot caricature, I'd like Dr. Peterson, our board secretary, to read the Board of Education's bylaws concerning public comments.
Thank you. So the bylaws of the Board of Education for Policy 9325A specifically focuses around meeting conduct. And it reads, "Meetings of the Board of Education shall be conducted by the chairperson in a manner consistent with the bylaws. The conduct of the meeting shall enable board members to consider problems to be solved, weigh evidence, and make wise decisions intended to solve problems. Board members shall receive, consider, and take any needed action with respect to reports of the accomplishment of students or of the school system. Individuals or groups may address the board concerning any subject that lies within its jurisdiction with the following guidelines. One, five minutes may be allotted to each speaker. Two, a maximum of 20 minutes will be given to each subject matter. Three, no oral presentation will include charges or complaints against any employee of the Board of Education, regardless of whether or not the employee is identified in the presentation by name or by another reference which identifies an individual. All complaints against employees can be submitted to the Board of Education under provisions by Board of Education bylaws. In the event that a Board of Education meeting is interrupted by any person or group of persons who render the orderly conduct of the meeting unfeasible, an order cannot be restored by the removal of individuals who are willfully interrupting the meeting. The chairman of the Board of Education shall order the meeting room cleared and continue in session. Media representatives, unless they were disorderly, shall be permitted to attend the sessions held in this manner. After time has passed, the chairman, in his over-discretion, may suspend the board meeting and invite back those members of the public not responsible for the disruption." So clearly, we're in a different situation now because we're in a Zoom meeting and we don't have anyone physically here with us except members of the board. So what we'll do is when public comment comes, we will have five minutes max per speaker. So just those of you that have something to say, please. We just observe enough the time so that more speakers would have a chance to say what they'd like to say. What I'll do is if you do get to the four-minute mark, I'll give you a heads up, and then four and a half minutes so you know that it's time to wrap up and we can go on to the next speaker so they can have their given time. Okay?
Sure. So we have, the last time we met, we had our workshop on Board Mascot. We discussed a couple of things that the district has not used a caricature since the 2015-2016 school year. We had some discussions on uniforms, that as we've been rotating our uniforms out, we have not been getting a shirt shirt back on the uniform and as well as the Indian name. I'd also like to just say that, you know, we have had an increase in communications from folks who would like to keep the Indian mascot caricature as well as those who would like to retire it. I'd like to say not all those emails were respectful and kind. All of us, take all your emails seriously, and we've read each one. We may not have responded to each and every one, but we did read each and every one and knew all the reasons as they come to. So I want to know if there's any other conversation that we need to have on the mascot caricature? And then as an action, I don't know.
I just want to make sure that we clarify for folks that tonight we're voting on the caricature, and that's not the end of the conversation, though. There's a workshop after this.
Correct.
I think that's just an important point. It doesn't get lost.
Okay, so just to clarify that. Yes, we had our last workshop. We chose to bring up to vote the mascot caricature. And we decided that we had needed more information and more time. And that is why we were having the workshop and discussion on the mascot, i.e. the mascot, the name Indian, after this meeting. So just to state it, the name of the Indians is not part of this regular Board of Ed meeting. It is part of a workshop. Here, so anybody else, any comments? Thanks for clarification. So may I, okay, I have to add this on to, I think, as an action item. So may I move that the North Haven Board of Education hereby officially retire the North Haven Public School's mascot caricature effective Thursday, May 13th, 2021?
So moved.
Second?
Second. Not open second?
Additional discussions. So what I do want to say is, you know, we have a list of uniforms and we have to make a decision on those. We cannot just go out and buy new uniforms because there are several uniforms that still have that caricature on it. This is assuming that we look to retire it. But so that will be a discussion that we will have to have a little later on, probably in June, July, on what to do about that. And we have to look at the budget and getting new uniforms if that caricature is omitted.
Can I just request that in advance of the meeting when we discuss that, can we just see what the total cost would be when we do go to discuss it so we can just understand the budget impact?
I can give you an approximate amount for not just the caricature, but the caricature and the Indian name to be removed off of all jerseys, uniforms, apparel. Would be about $30,000.
Okay.
Sure.
So we have, I have an idea. I'll be on the higher side because everything has increased in price. I went up gas earlier. So we'll go there. We'll figure out $30,000. Thank you. So any other discussion? All in favor of retiring the caricature?
Aye.
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 Any votes? Any abstentions? Dot, Joe, and Goldie, I'm having a hard time hearing you. Can I just ask you again to give your vote?
I voted in favor of retiring the imagery.
I voted in favor of retiring it also. I did as well.
Okay, thank you. So that motion passes. So next, we'll go to our superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening. Just a few updates tonight. We are currently in the midst of the hiring process for the new Green Acres Elementary School principal. The district committee held screening interviews last Friday and Saturday. This committee included Ms. Anderson, Dr. Peterson, Melinda, Jen Stewart, Howard, and myself. And yesterday and tomorrow are second round interviews. So this round and the following round will include a school-based interview team, which includes Green Acres faculty and staff, as well as Green Acres parents, our members of this committee. And I will continue to update the board around the process with the final step being a full board interview. Some really great news. North Haven High School prom has been opened up to outside guests. So I think from what I gathered from Dr. Dalle, there were audible cheers in the high school hallways when that announcement was made. I'd like to really thank Dr. Chief, Fire Chief Paul Janashevsky, who graciously took a ride out to Anthony's to make sure that if it rains, that there is enough room inside for all the attendees to be safely distanced. So he did not have to do that, and we're really grateful for him to do that. But the plan is to hold the prom outside at Anthony's from 5:00 to 9:00. I believe it's next Thursday, May 21st, so.
I think they changed the time from 6:00 to 10:00.
6:00 to 10:00.
That's a good better.
And just one final update around COVID-19 vaccinations. Jen K. has notified our families of students who are ages 12 to 15 that there are COVID vaccines available. I actually reached out to Hartford Healthcare earlier in the week just to see if they'd be open to holding a closed clinic. But they said that the vaccine is so readily available that they do not feel the need to hold the clinic like that. So what we've done is connect our students with some outside resources, CVS, Walgreens, different places, to be able to get your vaccine if they're interested in doing so. So that concludes my report tonight.
Our assistant superintendent?
I just have a quick update. I just want to remind families that they can register incoming kindergarten students on the district website. Currently, we have 187 registered, so a little bit more than usual. For those who have already registered, the schools have been sharing information regarding kindergarten screening in our district ID program. If you have any questions, you can just contact our school office directly. They'll assist you. I also want to take this opportunity to share that our district screening days for kindergarten are really just a fun time for our incoming students and their families. And it's very developmentally appropriate. And the goal is that our new kindergartners and their families can meet some of the school staff and get an opportunity to visit the school. As a district, we realize that our youngest learners come to us at all different stages and from many different preschool opportunities, especially given coming off the pandemic. Some students have not had preschool. Preschool has been maybe on and off as school has been. So there's no worry for families. There's no checklist of skills that students need to be able to master or show that they can do when they get here. We are here to meet all the needs of our students who come to us and we're excited to welcome them. So that's all I wanted to say.
Melinda, can I ask you a question about the enrollment numbers?
Yes.
How far in a pace are they?
Not that much out of pace right now. We've met, we have one more elementary school to meet with in the coming week. And we're meeting with each principal. But we are looking at our classroom sizes, particularly at elementary, just to keep an eye on them and to make sure that none are getting too large.
Do you get the impression that some families put off kindergarten because of the pandemic and that we might have like a little mini bubble?
There might be a little bit of a bubble, yes. That's what we're thinking. You know, it ebbs and flows every year anyway, so it's a little bit hard to tell. But at 187 this morning, that's pretty solid kindergarten numbers. Exactly, for this early on. We've got our eye on them.
Jen Stewart, Division of Services?
The Special Education Department was awarded a $20,000 grant to provide direct instruction to students at the elementary level who are diagnosed as having a learning disability in the area of reading. The instruction will occur over a two-week period in August to prep them for the beginning of school. Students will be instructed in the area of decoding, sightword reading, accuracy, and comprehension. And they will also have a chance to begin working on their executive functioning skills. And I will send additional information to families, probably within the next month. That's all I have to say.
Social motion, leave it.
Thank you.
Okay, mine will not be as short. Just a few items regarding the budget. The budget remains firmly in an overall surplus position. I intend to have a target year-end surplus amount at our next meeting. Recommendations for how we should utilize that going forward or how the board should utilize that going forward for reserves and the like. Regarding grants, the final SRR3, or as it's also known, American Rescue Plan allocation, was provided by the state. I know we initially informed you that it was $2.3 to $2.4 million. However, the final allocation came in at $2,441,000. And from this amount, we must use 20% of that for learning loss, which equates to about $408,108. So again, it's about $300,000 to $400,000 less than we were told we were going to get, but it's still a significant amount of money that we can utilize going forward. And again, what they're saying that we have to, the guidelines of what we have to utilize it for are identical to the SRR1 and SRR2, which is the learning loss and a lot of stuff related to COVID in the sense of helping students and helping families catch up on the learning loss, be a part of it. So again, that's it. But again, they're also, they actually created a different section, which is called Building Safe and Healthy Buildings. So that's part of it, so you can use it to upgrade your HVAC systems and things like that also. So that's, again, it's for further discussion when we go forward, is when we get the funds in. And then the final section that I have is the reserves. I sent you out an email today because I had finally got that analysis completed. I got the information. So good news. The claims did not come in as high as I expected. I estimated they were going to be $750,000. They came in about $582,000, which then changes the average going forward. So right now, we have about $900,000. I'm estimating we'll have about $900,000 in reserves for medical when we get to year-end. However, you also saw in my report that the low level, the actuarial reserve required is about $1.6 million. So that's a significant difference between what we have. Again, one of the other items is that we do have about $300,000 over-reserved in dental, which we can then utilize towards the medical. So again, we can work this all out come year-end. But again, I still do think we're going to have to take some of that excess cash or excess surplus budget that we have and put it towards medical reserves. I don't have the actuary report yet for the workers' comp. But again, currently, we have about $770,000 in there, and I think that's sufficient. But again, I have to wait for the actual report to be able to give you a final number on that. Then I would just open up to any questions anyone has about the budget or.
Can I just say thank you for the report that you sent us this morning? It was very clear, and I appreciate you taking the time to help us understand the context behind the numbers as well. So this makes sense to me, and for the first time maybe ever, I have no questions.
Please, no kidding. Thanks. Goldie, have a question?
Yes, Goldie.
In terms of the $2 million plus allocation, what is the timeline to actually use it? How long do we have to actually use the funds?
So we're required to encumber the funds by September of 2023.
Okay.
They haven't set a deadline as to when the funds have to be utilized after that. So you encumber them, you just have to say what I'm going to use them for, and that's got to be done by 2023.
Okay, so we have time to plan?
Correct. We do, well, just to clarify too, we do have to start the application and have it completed within 90 days. So around the August timeframe, an application has to be submitted. One of the questions when I was on with the Connecticut, the State Department of Education, a question was asked, can we just put "to be determined" as a category? And the commissioner of the Department of Education said, yes, that is a possibility that you can put "to be determined", that you don't know what it is because it's so, because they're so far out. It's years out, and we don't know exactly what we're going to need to use it for. So they're going to work with the districts to be able to put that into the application. But again, the application, we have to have a plan and an application in place by August. But again, that can be revised over the years as we go forward because as things change, we'll be able to revise that application and say, we said we were going to use it for this, but now something else has come up and we'd rather use it for that, as long as it qualifies under the guidelines set by the federal and state governments.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So how will we go about deciding how to spend the year?
We're still determining that because 20% of it has to be directed towards learning laws. The SRR2 has supported us this summer, this spring, and next fall. So moving forward, that 20% will help carry our summer programs and our intervention programs throughout the school year. And then we're looking at different options. Howard did mention some building maintenance. We're exploring possibly making class sizes smaller for the next few years. So hiring a few extra teachers to keep, especially at the lower elementary levels, to keep our class sizes not only just manageable, but lower than they have been in past years. Possibly increasing the physical fitness, physical activity for students during the school week. So different options like that. I was actually on a meeting with other superintendents, and we had a discussion around outdoor classrooms and maybe putting some of them at the elementary level as well, so.
And a primary goal is going to be accelerating those preschools and making that spread over the new year.
Thank you.
Anita, can I mention something for New Business?
Sure.
Today's Eid, the Muslim holiday, and I was wondering if, as a board, we may at some point address perhaps incorporating that holiday into our school calendar because we have a growing Muslim population in our district and so that it is a, you know, sort of yesterday-to-day sort of day. And a lot of our end-of-year activities occur around now, and there are families who I think are impacted by that. They have to choose between attending a special awards ceremony or celebrating with family. And I'm wondering if that's something, our calendar right now honors the Judeo-Christian holidays, but I'm wondering if maybe as a board throughout the summer, we can maybe talk about adding the holiday Eid to our calendar? Just a question for further discussion.
Jen, may I jump in really quick? There's actually a 12th grader at the high school has written a proposal and submitted it to the administration at the high school and shared it with me. I got permission to share it with the board, so that'll be sent out to you tomorrow morning regarding Eid and that, having the board recognize it in the district calendar in the future. In addition, I'm also meeting with a staff member who had same questions around that and would like to potentially present these options to the board too. Jen?
Any other questions or anything, reminders on the agenda? I can add, I can make a motion to add New Business on here? Or anything, if anyone else wanted to add on New Business? Thank you. Before we move to public comments. Okay, we can open it up to public comments.
First person that we have is Jill Jenkins. Jill, could you unmute yourself and make your public comment?
Hi, thank you. My name is Jill Jenkins Jenkins, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to address you about this in it, about this issue, about retiring the Indian imagery. Thank you for that. But I also implore you to also retire the Indian name. I was raised in North Haven, and I attended North Haven Public Schools from kindergarten through 12th grade, and I graduated in 1982. So I wanted to offer you a little bit of my personal experience as, you know, a student in North Haven. I was a member of the high school track team, and I attended many sporting events during my time as a student, as well as the next 10 years following the support of my siblings who also attended North Haven schools. And during that time, I remember the fans at the football games and their various behaviors, like tomahawk chops and fake Indian chants. And all that was done to support the team and help them win and all of that. They were treated as, you know, a fun way to build school spirit. They were treated as, you know, a fun way to build school spirit and have fun. But here's the problem. North Haven history curriculum was sparse, lacking, and inaccurately portrayed Native people. And as an unspoken, it was an unspoken acceptance that Native people didn't matter and that their existence was barely relevant. I am an indigenous person myself, and I physically resemble my ancestors that date back many, many generations. But most of my classmates did not know that. They just saw a person of color. And as a result, I absorbed many racial taunts from classmates and some microaggressions, even from teachers and administrators. Some were directed at me personally, and others were hurled out at sporting events. I knew most of my classmates didn't understand the impact of the school's mascot. Honestly, I was not fully aware at the time either until many years later, when my husband and I were considering North Haven as a town in which we wanted to raise our children. In 2003, we were living in California, but we were returning to Connecticut, and we were strongly considering North Haven because I still had family members there. But after having the experience or the knowledge now, many years later, and understanding what it feels like to be the other person, always feeling like the other, I now understood the impact that has on a person long-term. So we ultimately decided to move our family to another town. And then later on, I felt happy that I did because, you know, this issue just kept coming up. I watched my niece go through many experiences. So, you know, retiring the Indian name is in itself even inaccurate because Christopher Columbus thought he saw Indians, he thought he was on India, and thought that the brown people were Indians from the continent of India or the country of India. But they were not, they were Native Americans. So there's like so much misconception and misunderstanding around it. It's just not acceptable. So I am asking you to please consider retiring the name as well as the imagery, and pick something else that, you know, shows that North Haven, that North Haven is mindful and inclusive, and is not trying to make somebody else, some of their children feel like the other, like I do. And with that, I'll conclude my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Josh Bornstein. Could you please unmute yourself and make your comment?
Hi, this is Josh and Kate Bornstein, 1066 Monwood Avenue. We have children in the high school and the elementary school. So first, I want to thank you for retiring the imagery of the mascot, really grateful for that, but I'm hopeful that you will also retire the commission use of the name. I've already written to all of you listing a number of reasons why, why I hope you'll do so, for a number of reasons. I just, I thought of one new thing which I wanted to share with you, is that this issue is really never going to be settled until the name is eventually retired. It's going to keep coming up and coming up. And it's preventing, I think, the community from getting together on other issues. This issue has caused so much division that it's preventing us from coming together on other things to make North Haven the best school system in Connecticut. And I think if anything, it seems like as good a reason as any to retire the name is so we can move on as a community and so we can gain closure. There are many, many other reasons to do so. I've outlined them to you in a separate email, but I wanted to share kind of that new thought I have. Kate, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I was fortunate enough to have an op-ed published and registered the past Sunday, and I think that that states my position. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for taking our comments.
Okay, and next we have Jill Mallor Kesselman. Could you please unmute yourself and make your comment?
Good evening. I'm here tonight as a member of the community and as a retired school psychologist who has dedicated my career to working collaboratively with families, community members, educators, and administrators to create supportive learning environments for all students. I first want to thank you for your service to our community and for countless hours that you have all spent reviewing and considering the information about the impact of Native American teams and imagery. Thank you also for voting tonight to retire the mascot. The division in our community regarding the retirement of the team's name and mascot has placed all of you in a very difficult position. As school board members, you have been elected to govern and lead North Haven's public schools and to represent the interests of the entire district, not a subgroup of the community. According to the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, commonly known as CAE, one of your key responsibilities is to define a district's mission and primary goals in collaboration with input from the community and in collaboration with the superintendent. CAE's website notes that effective school boards engage in ongoing tomit communication with the entire district community, which clearly you have been doing, and seeks input from the community regarding district priorities. CAE further notes the importance of communicating district priorities and progress toward achieving these goals. Yet ultimately, it is the Board of Education that is responsible for making decisions based on evidence rather than personal experiences or beliefs. Supporting a healthy school district culture for work and learning, maintaining strong ethical standards, and leading the community in a direction that will bring our school district closer to achieving its stated goals. According to CAE, board members should vote in the best interest of the school district and realize that there are times when change must be made, when tradition cannot be honored, and when pressure must be ignored. This is one of those difficult times. It is a time to realize that real change must be made. It is a time to ignore the pressures that we are receiving from subgroups in this community to maintain traditions that we now understand to be harmful to students, traditions that are contradictory to the very mission and vision of this school system. Change is always very difficult. Making needed changes in a community that is as divided as ours is challenging, and at times maybe even frightening. Yet, it is during these challenging times that your role as leaders is most critical. If we truly want to raise and educate children who become productive global citizens in an ever-changing world, we must prepare them for change, and we must help them to understand the experiences and beliefs of other cultures. If we really believe that we are obligated to help students adapt to an ever-changing, multicultural world, we must be their role models by demonstrating that we can adapt and change. If we really believe that we must help students develop positive self-esteem and appreciation of the worth of others, and an understanding of and respect for diverse beliefs, cultures, backgrounds, abilities, and perspectives, we must retire both the Indians team name and the mascot, and replace them with a new name and mascot that will unify our town. Thank you.
And next we have April Capone. Could you please unmute yourself and make your comment?
Oh, hello. Hi, I am April Capone from 105 Cornepiac Avenue in North Haven, and I would like to thank the board for coming together to vote to retire the mascot caricature. And I implore you to please take the final step and retire the Indians name as well. And at this point, I would like to yield the remainder of my time to Ms. Kendall Washington. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I'm Kendall.
So you can go ahead.
Thank you. Nakish Kowatwong. My name is Kendall Washington. I am a member of the Ntmaq Narragansett Tribal Nation, and I am part of the Cedar Clan. I'm joined here with my mother, Dana, and I just wanted to speak a little bit about my time in North Haven as a student. I've switched districts to North Haven, but since I was there, I went to Mottwee's Elementary School, and our mini mascot was Penguin Mac. And we were supposed to embrace a penguin, kind, cuddly, nice to everyone, and the most important thing was that we were all family, and we could always talk to each other and always be supportive in our different thinkings. But we, like, as a Native American student, I felt different. So in first grade, when November came around, the typical Native American-like teaching month, we liked about Columbus Day, and it was just a really hard time, and everything that my first-grade teacher taught me seemed very wrong, as in we were, like, people were savages and fought back with everything they did, and they had chicken pox and gave it to pilgrims that came over, and it wasn't true. We would also reenact these things in the classroom, and I was, of course, told to be represented as a Native American, but I would have my other classmates who were not Native American or any minority be a part of my clan or tribe, which just wasn't true. And I told my teacher, like, I don't feel comfortable doing this, and that it's actually Indigenous Peoples' Day now, and I don't celebrate Columbus Day. And she sort of, like, just called me ridiculous, and that wasn't true, and I was the first student to ever speak out against the curriculum and North Haven's teaching. So I was asked to go home and put together a presentation about basically my culture and why I'm still here and why, like, why Columbus Day was wrong. And I know that there are a lot of after effects, like, on my mental health, that I was the only one, thinking I was the only person to speak out about it. But now, as I've grown up, I've currently played lacrosse basketball, and I see this caricature everywhere, and people asking me, oh, are you Indian? Because I come to school with my native earrings and different things like that. And no, and I have to educate that I'm Native American and not an Indian. And it's just, it's everywhere, and calling, like, an Indian, being called an Indian savage at a very young age, and having to learn how to, like, yeah, deal with it and protect myself constantly. And now, I thank everyone for speaking out about it and for it to hopefully be changed, and hopefully be changed now, and not have to go on since this has been a constant struggle since 2015. And I ask that the name and the imagery be changed, as you can't, like, it just, having an Indian name and you having a different caricature or a stereotypical Indian as the imagery, it's also same way as offensive, and just changing the imagery is not enough. So, thank you for...
Thank you. Next, we have Viana Pham. Could you please unmute yourself and make your comment?
Hi, my name is Viana Pham, and I'm a student at North Haven High School. I believe it's me who's been retired, and her name and imagery. In an era where racism and bigotry normalize, we're to take a step back with an open mind and listen to marginalized voices. The majority of students are either misinformed or ignorant of the history of our mascot, therefore not honoring it but disrespecting it. However, despite even being informed of the history, it does not change the fact that rather than valuing Native American people, this mascot perpetuates stereotypes that are harmful and appropriates indigenous people. These types of mascots are teaching stereotypical, misleading, and too often insulting images of Native Americans. These negative lessons are not just affecting Native American students, they're sending the wrong message to all students. It undermines the ability of Native American nations to portray accurate and respectful images of their culture, spirituality, and traditions. It is frustrating to watch administrators, teachers, and fellow students be okay with keeping this mascot. The North Haven High School mission statement preaches that the staff, students, parents, and the community creating atmosphere of mutual respect, shared responsibility, and support, and encourages engagement within the school and community. Clearly, the North Haven educational system has failed to obviation by allowing this racist mascot to represent our school, has not accurately taught Native American history, and disregards the students speaking out about their discomfort with the mascot. We are the shared responsibility to help eradicate the racism and cultural appropriation that continues to plague our town. Therefore, this is why I hope you guys decide to retire the current mascot name and name. Thank you for letting me speak. And if I could, can I carry on to Ivani?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Ivani Okosa, and I'm a student at North Haven High School. I have heard conversations about the mascot and the name we use to represent our school. I've witnessed the impact of these same conversations from friends and students within the school. Being a part of North Haven, I've always prided myself on our morality and dignity, but it's hard to be proud knowing that we are pushing stereotypes that harm the Native American community. As a student, a student should not feel ashamed or embarrassed to express where they go to school. As a student athlete, I am ashamed to wear any apparel that has North Haven Indians on it. You ask us to represent and be proud in a wrong term. Indian is the term representing Indian people who were born in India. The connection between the mascot and term are politically wrong. Why would you want to represent something that is offensive and wrong? There is no reason to keep a mascot and name if people within the school having to represent it find it offensive. We cannot sacrifice anyone's well-being because of the pride of others. I'm glad to be from North Haven, but I'm not proud to be an Indian. Before I go, I'd like to highlight another student speaker, Genevieve Peters.
Am I allowed to speak, or...
Yes, please proceed.
Okay. Hi, my name is Genevieve Peters, and I am a student at North Haven High School in North Haven. Our new school mascot is North Haven's next step to a better, more culturally accepting environment for our school and for the town itself. Many people say that the mascot honors or respects the Native tribe that lived in our town, but that is factually incorrect. It's correct that it's the mascot itself. The mascot was a North Haven student. The student in question was didn't purchase her community by offering her drawing of the town. However, she used her method from a member of the Pequot tribe instead of Chief Mottwee's tribe, which was, and I'm not sure what the name of it was, about 100 people, they were one of the tribes in the area. The mascot itself is supposed to be a representation of Chief Mottwee's. The chief of this tribe, history state Pequot tribe, were invading his tribe, and Chief Mottwee's gave a portion of his clan to the incoming settlers in exchange against the Pequots. When the student who attempted to draw Chief Mottwee's used a member of the Pequot tribe, instead, she inadvertently insulted this history of North Haven itself. It can just say offensive to her using people as a mascot. The mascot is offensive to North Haven as a whole. Incorrectly, Chief Mottwee's was often portrayed as a hero in stories, as the invading Pequot tribe. The mascot has been offensive, inaccurate, and historically derogatory, and must be changed immediately. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Robin Mashib. Could you please unmute yourself and make your comment?
Thank you, and thank you to the Board of Ed for your continued work on this important issue. My name is Dr. Robin Mashib. I'm an 18-year resident. I have two children in the North Haven school system, and one in high school, one in the middle school. I'm also a...
Hold on one second. Hold on. I need to fix the audio. We are having a terrible hearing. We're trying to figure out how we can do that.
I think Robin is speaking louder, it's easier to hear. I think people are away from their microphones, maybe we can tell them that kind of...
I'm sorry, Robin.
You sound good.
Robin, you sound good, but...
Yeah, you're good. Did I start again?
One second.
Go ahead, Robin.
Should I start from the top?
Yes.
Yes, please.
So I just want to thank the Board of Ed for your continued work on this important issue. I know that this has been a...
I know that this has been a long haul. My name is Dr. Robin Mashib. I'm an 18-year resident. I have two children in the North Haven School District, one in the high school, one in the middle school. I'm also a professor at the Yale School of Medicine. And the perspective that I'd like to come at at this is I'm a psychologist and mental health researcher. And so I wanted to take an opportunity and also an educator to educate and talk about the research. And I'll try to do it very quickly. So in terms of education, stereotypes are harmful for unfamiliar groups of people and Native Americans are unfamiliar to the majority of us. They represent only 1.5% of the population with only about half of them living in metropolitan areas. They are rarely portrayed in media and if they are, it is generally truly insensitive or inaccurate ways. The flip side of this is that the Indian mascots have been widespread throughout American educational institutions where they're consistently linked to a limited number of stereotypical traits, images, and behaviors that are then projected onto Native American people. So within the scientific community that is looking at this issue, the major scientific question that they have are, are Indian mascots a positive way to honor and include Native Americans? Or are they in fact a harmful form of stereotyping? Like I just mentioned. The research here combines both the mascot images and texts that are related to Native Americans. I think it's important that we combine those things because I think there's harm in names, not just in images. In 2020, there was a published comprehensive review of the research findings on the psychosocial effects of Native American mascots. This was conducted to provide administrators and school board members, the people who are on this call, information about exposure to Indian mascots in schools. And here are the key questions that they were trying to address. What is the effect on Native American students? What is the effect on non-Native American students? And what is the effect on other minority groups? I think it's very interesting that we've been able to hear students or former students. And so I think you have kind of some first-person accounts that validate what the research has found. So with regard to Native American students, the research shows detrimental effects in three important areas: in self-esteem, in community belonging, that one belongs in the community and would like to be there. And then in educational and career attainment, what people's dreams are and their hopes for their future. With regard to non-Native Americans, the research shows that while students may feel positively about the mascots and maybe feel that they're fun, when they are exposed to mascots, those induce feelings of dysphoria, anxiety, depression, and hostility. So at some level, students understand that this is wrong. It makes them feel bad and that perhaps they could be targets of stereotypes, prejudices, and discrimination. With regard to other minority groups, exposure to mascots specifically induced stereotyping beyond Native Americans. And this is most notable for Asian Americans. This research also shows that these effects are worse the longer the student is in the school system with an Indian mascot. So the repeated exposure of this compounds over time and gets worse. And it's for these reasons that the American Psychological Association, which is my professional organization that represents over 120,000 scientific and professional members, has a resolution recommending the immediate retirement of Native American mascots and all things related for the mental health and well-being of children in this country. And so have two other American Psychological Associations. Those are the American Indian and Alaska Native Society of Indian Psychologists and the Asian American Psychological Association. One final thing is that the research shows that Native Americans who identify with their heritage and culture, and that's through lived experience on reservations, contact with other tribal members, people who engage in cultural behaviors and have accurate knowledge of Native history, find this offensive. And Goldie Dell, I really appreciate at the last meeting, at the workshop, that you talked about the importance of listening to the voices of those most identified with their culture and history. And I concur with this. And I'm delighted that we have members in our community who are Native American who are here to speak to this. In closing, I'd like to ask the Board to retire both the North Haven Indians' name and mascot and cease the use of other stereotypical Native American images. I want to thank you for your continued support and deliberations on this issue. And I feel like tonight is a really important first step in getting rid of this and moving on to having some, you know, a better curriculum on Native American history. And I think that we're joining with school districts all across the country. There's news coming out every day about different schools in the state and within the whole United States who are doing this. So I really appreciate that and thank you for the time.
My name is Ben Rudicoff. I'm an 11th grader at North Haven High School. And I'm speaking in support of changing the mascot name. And I appreciate the progress the Board of Education has made on this topic. But I believe that now is the time to finally retire the Indian name. Among the reasons this change must happen is because of the research my mom just shared, how the presence of this mascot encourages stereotypical behavior in students, not just Native Americans, but even other minorities such as Asian Americans. Furthermore, the Mohegan, Natchitochka Pequods, and the Golden Hill Pogusic Tribes, the Native American tribes closest to us that the general Indian name is supposed to represent, I sent letters to the Board asking them to make a change. This stereotypical name has been normalized in our town due to a lack of proper education about Native American history in our schools. And it is therefore the responsibility of the Board to take the right action regardless of what many people will counsel. Thank you, Ben.
All right, thank you. Next.
Hey, Dan, hold on.
Yes.
Can you hear us? You can hear us?
Yes.
Okay. We've gone over our 20 minutes quite a bit. But before we stop this discussion, I do want to see if there's anybody who has a different opinion that has been waiting to speak and did not have that opinion. And I would just allow an extra five minutes on that before we go into other public comments outside of the Indian. Has anybody given you any comments or any notes?
No, I just, I ask for people to make their, just say comment if they end up to speak.
Okay. So maybe you can ask if anyone has an opposing opinion that they'd like to discuss to raise their hand to you now.
Yeah, if anyone has another comment, something different, then please raise your hand or unmute yourself and make your comment.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other topics outside of the Indian mascot? Anyone else would like to bring up any other comments that we have? Okay. I'll give another minute.
Yeah, there's nothing. No one's commenting.
Okay. Thank you all and our students who spoke. We all.
I think, Anita.
Yes?
I think I saw Dana Washington and another, I think the name is under Jeff. I saw them raised and they were commenting on something else. They responded to the question about something else outside the mascot.
Oh, okay. Can he unmute himself?
Anita, can you please unmute yourself and make your comment?
This is Sally Boyme. Can I comment by phone?
No. Sally, we're looking for comments outside of the mascot right now.
Yes, I'm sorry to interrupt Madam Chair, but I thought no one stepped forward.
I believe somebody did, correct, Goldie?
Oh, excuse me.
Yeah, let me check.
Yes, there were two people that I saw on my screen. The first lady is under the name Jeff and the other lady is Dana Washington. Both of them have their hands raised in terms of something outside the, a topic outside the mascot.
And are you there?
Hi, Winnie Nakish Gaoatwong. I greet everybody today in my native tongue. My name is Dana Washington. I am a resident of the North Haven community. I will talk to you about something a little bit different than the mascot. And that is, I heard earlier that you mentioned that there was a big budget constraint on actually changing some of the uniforms. I would implore you to actually look at the bigger picture of when you actually look at the cost for, you know, changing uniforms with just removal of the caricatures of the mascot that you also consider the names. I'd also implore you to actually look at the fact the North Haven Board of Education actually has a responsibility to its students to provide a fair, equitable, harassment-free, discrimination-free, judgment-free zone for children, all children, to learn. Not just children that are not of color, children of all ages, children of all grades. Just wanted to remind you that you actually have that responsibility to be fair and balanced, to provide a safe education for children who are enrolled in your school system. For the time that my child was enrolled in the North Haven school system, she was not provided with those luxuries whatsoever. Also, as my child also continues to participate in sports and we do buy uniforms for our sports teams every single season just about, I would want, you know, you to not only talk about the education academic effects of students, but also those students who are athletes. My daughter has actually been forced to wear the Indian name as well as the Indian caricatures on many of her uniforms. She's already spoke to you a little bit about those effects. But I could also tell you a lot about those psychological effects. But my comment tonight is really about providing a healthy environment for all of our students. And not about the mascot at all, but because you decided to kind of keep the name, I'm talking to you tonight about the name of the Indian. I've had many, many family members who I've actually asked to come into North Haven and live here. They would never. My child cannot wear any of her school uniforms or a lot of the school paraphernalia to any of our cultural events because it would really insult our community. When she won the basketball championship, I wanted to brag and post pictures on Facebook and social media. I couldn't because she was wearing her uniform and I knew the backlash that I would receive. When she scored goals in her lacrosse games, couldn't post those either because, of course, she has a big fat Indian on the back of her uniform. So I want to just, you know, talk to you just a little bit about the responsibility that you have as board members. I thank you for your time to this and I will reserve the rest of my comments about the mascot particularly and my effects as a child of having to dress up as Pilgrim on Indian Day on third grade. I'll reserve some of those for later. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you. I always enjoy listening to you learn along. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another comment from Scott Friedman.
Hi, I did join tonight to talk about the mascot, but in light of the 20-minute limitation, which I think has cut off both Black and Native voices, I want to speak about the climate of diversity and inclusion in our schools. I want to applaud you for hiring Ivani Okosa towards the end of last year and remind you that I've yet to see his presence in the continued Board of Ed discussions about either racism in the school system, where I have heard at least three distinct events this year that have taken place, and also within this conversation about the mascot. Further, you know, I want to point out that I was made aware of the Black History Month presentation that was sent out by the district. It focuses on two athletes, one entertainer, I think an actor, and did not focus on Black academics, Black culture more broadly, and a musician, I believe. But at the end of the day, you know, I think it's really fundamentally important that we focus on diversity and inclusion broadly, specifically about the mascot broadly, about all the cultures. And I really applaud the 12th grader who put up the request to have Eve added to the holidays. You know, firmly, I just, I want to give you a sense that people in the district are watching. I've taken a quick look around the meeting and I see many voices who have spoken out on social media and otherwise on behalf of diversity and inclusion in our schools. And we are not going to stop discussing this once the mascot is retired for good. Frankly, this is the beginning of what I suspect will be a monthly discussion where we talk about the ways that we can make this a more welcoming district. I appreciate and applaud all your efforts. I firmly believe that you have the best interests of our town at hand. And I really just want to echo what others have said to make this change fully and choose a new mascot and to focus on diversity and inclusion going forward, not just for Native Americans, but for Black students and others in the district. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Thank you for all the public comments. And I'll turn it over to Anita.
Okay. Anyway, there's a hand up in the corner. Do you see? There's one hand up. This will be our last comment for the night. We've gone well above. The hand is still there.
Yes. Yeah, Lisa Bellamy. Please unmute yourself.
Sally? Sally Boyme? Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi. Hello. Yes, my name is Lisa Bellamy Fluker. My daughter here, Zoe Burns, the graduate of North Haven High School as well as my other girls, three of my other children. And what I wanted to say in closing remarks is about leadership. I'm Dr. Lisa Fluker and I am passionate about education and I'm really passionate about the decision that you've made tonight. But in terms of leadership, there's a book, Five Exemplary Practices of Leadership. And part of that book, one of the five exemplary practices is leading by example. And I think tonight you've done that. So I want to applaud you for leading by example. But another one of those exemplary practices is encouraging the heart and challenging the process. And so I would just say to march forward and continue to build on what you've done tonight. And thank you so much for being the leaders that you are. And I look for you to lead more as we continue to move into unity. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That's all for public comment.
Yes.
With that, may I have a motion to adjourn the May 13, 2021 regular meeting of the Board of Ed? Second? All in favor? Um, bye.
Bye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Yeah, there you go.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for your patience while we were able to get our technical difficulties addressed. But I'd like to call the May 13, 2021 special meeting of the North Haven Board of Education to order at 8 o'clock. Tonight's meeting will serve as a second workshop to allow the Board to discuss the district's mascot. As a reminder, there will not be public comments this evening. However, NHTV is live streaming this meeting via their Facebook page. So I'd also just like to start by saying I want to thank everyone for taking their time to attend the workshop to further discuss the topic of the Indian mascot, i.e. at this point, the Indian name. And specifically, our topic is going to be keeping or retiring the name of the Indian. As I have previously said, I am constantly impressed with the level of discussion and respect shown by each member of this Board to one another. There is a clear respect of the opinions of all board colleagues and the opinions of community members who have taken the time to reach out to each of us. I'm acknowledging that we are here tonight under tremendous pressure from outside influence. The decisions surrounding the mascot rest solely within this Board. I have felt the weight of this debate for over five years, but especially in the last 18 months, as I know many of you have too. We have spoken or corresponded with community members, medical professionals and tribal leadership on this topic. We have spent many hours taking in and reviewing the information, whether collaboratively as a Board of Ed or I know each of you have done that individually. As a Board, we have agreed tonight to officially retire the caricature. We all agree that an additional curriculum, we all agreed at our last workshop, that an additional curriculum is needed to educate our students on Native American history and the Native American history of North Haven. Our next step is determining if we retire the mascot altogether and choose a new mascot or do we keep the name, the Indians, and impose restrictions on how it is used. We have heard opinions on both sides of this debate. Some view the potential retirement of the mascot as a step towards erasing the Native American. as a step towards erasing the Native American culture and the history within North Haven. Some view this as an educational opportunity. Others point to research that has potentially harmful effects to both students of color and white students, while other view the Indian mascot, name I'm saying, as erasing individual tribal heritage. My hope is that this Board can continue to lead the way by example through respectful debate, although the discussion will not please everyone. But no matter what our future decision is on the mascot, we're going to get critics on both sides of the issue. So we need to do our best to view the information and perspective that has been presented and to make a decision as we always do for the needs and the best interests of all of our students. And with that, at your spot is earlier this afternoon, the Board of Education received a letter from the State of Connecticut Commissioner on Human Rights and Opportunity. The letter was from a team of attorneys at the CHRO focused on eliminating the racist practice of using American Indian, Alaskan Native names, symbols, and imagery of school mascots in Connecticut. The letter clearly states that CHRO is currently in the process of assessing litigation options which may culminate in the towns that choose to continue this discriminatory practice, having formal complaints filed against them. In closing, the letter is imploring the Board of Education to volunteer to cease the discriminatory use of the Indians mascot. CHRO is very clear in their position and has put the district on notice. I wanted you to just bring that up. The letter is on your table, and I believe that everyone else has, we all have the full summary from them. So a couple of things is, you know, I'd like to say with that, I'd like to know who would like to open up the discussion. Fortnight, Amanda?
If nobody else wants to, I'm happy to. So since our last workshop, there has been some new information this coming week. I guess you've gotten hundreds of pages of information. But there was a Yukon and CHRO meeting last week where the panel was directly asked whether retiring the image but not the name would be considered something that was appropriate. And the panel unanimously said that it seems like a distinction without a difference. And because it takes away the fun of having a mascot and leaves kind of like a weird scar that will continue to make everybody uncomfortable, they didn't see any value in that. We also, I also watched a Native Voices event that took place with North Haven Native American and Indigenous residents talking about this. I think that was Tuesday. And I thought there was some really thoughtful discussion there about, you know, some Native folks who had originally said that they didn't think it was a big deal or they thought it was kind of funny or didn't find it offensive, and they have kind of changed their thinking. And to me, that sort of really, the entire conversation resonated with me. But I felt, I felt like a lot of people, I think, are having sort of a struggle with this where they maybe don't find it offensive or didn't find it offensive, and then their opinions are evolving. And I think having Native folks tell us that their opinions had evolved was very impactful to me. I've heard from several folks who have come forward and said that they didn't send their children to school here anymore and have cited the mascot not as a primary reason, but as a compounding factor. And to me, that's impactful as well. I've reviewed all the public comments that we've received, and I know that the letter references 150 emails, but I'm at 275 right now from residents and people asking us to change. And I do have some from people who are asking us to keep it. But I think my social circle is maybe a little bit different, and I think I'm just not getting the influx of people asking to keep it that other folks are getting because I only have six of those right now. And it's not like a numbers game. I just, I am listening to the folks who are writing and emailing and saying that they would like to keep it. I'm just, I'm not getting a whole lot from them. And maybe it's because of my social circle, which is admittedly different from everybody else here. And then the students tonight who came and gave public comment and the students who have written to us as board members, asking us to change both the name and the image, was also impactful to me. And, you know, in speaking with my husband earlier, to me, it was, what it fundamentally comes down to is language is something that we teach our kids here. It's something that we are responsible for our students for. And I think it's really critical that we use our words wisely and judiciously. So to me, I think this is a good time to make the full change.
On the other side, as of the debate, and we've gotten some emails and we've gotten a couple of phone calls more so than anything. What people are coming back and forth with is to remove the name. It's interesting because a lot of the community, I believe, understands the caricature. But some of the people in the community, alumni and other people in the community, they're not understanding or they don't feel that the name Indian is offensive. I know we're trying to educate as much as possible to people with the information that we have. You know, they have, I'm going to take a little bit of something of an email that we got from a person yesterday morning. She said, a lot of people looking, community members, when they look at, think of North Haven, they think of the Indian. They say, and we've all heard it, they say, "I'm proud to be an Indian." Those are good memories for them. Those are memories that they, to give up on that. They don't want to give up on that memory. But how do we let people know that memory will always be there, that will always be there? But things are different now. We need to find a different way to honor the Native Americans of North Haven by not using the name Indian. And I think that, so I think what I'm doing right here is putting out the debate. You have people who have a long-held tradition. They feel that because it started, and I don't have the exact dates, but I believe it was like in the 1940s, 1950s that we were named North Haven Indians. So they've been there, and it's stayed, and that's what they've known over and over again. So I mean, that's just, I just want to give both sides to their, I mean, that's something. But, you know, the woman who wrote to us did say there's a lot of school pride from where they, where her comments were. And I'm paraphrasing what some of the things that she wrote to us, that we need to know that, you know, to let people know that their thoughts, the people on the other side, their thoughts are not, in my, this is me talking, not that email. Their thoughts are not racist thoughts. Their thoughts are that they're holding on to something that has been around since the 1940s, 1950s, something that's been giving, has given them memories, happy memories, school pride. And that's where I see the main difference is. So that education is knowing that maybe the term Indian was okay 30 years ago, but today it's not okay. And it's not a cancel culture as part of this whole dialogue, still looking for ways to honor the Native American of North Haven, but not using an Indian name.
Anita, can I just ask one other question? Like, can I just kind of probe on that a little bit? Because I understand the school pride thing. I don't know if you guys know this, but I was voted most school spirited in 2001 from Fairfield High. And it's something that I look back on my time there very fondly. I think that it's important to have school pride. Do you think that now that we've retired the caricature and we're imposing limits on the use of the caricature, like it's not allowed anymore, are we taking something from the students? Are we taking something from their experience by them in essence not having a mascot? They can be called the Indians, but that's not a mascot, right? And to me, I think it sort of cheapens the experience of school pride and athleticism to say, you only get half. You only get half, and it was a deal that was made to make some people comfortable, and other people are still not going to be comfortable with this.
I think no one will be happy with half. I think, I've come out the other side of my high school. Having a Native mascot no longer does. I have great memories from high school. And, you know, was a cheerleader, that kind of thing, back in high school. When I think about some of the emails we've gotten about honoring the Native culture and how erasing the mascot or removing it, some people, people use all different words for retiring the mascot, how that's dishonorable to the Native folks. Honestly, after, I feel silly saying this, but after all of the information that we've gotten, I go back to something that Talia's dad said. And this was, I mean, poor Talia worked on all of this stuff to bring to us, but what's sticking with me is what her dad said. And he spoke, and he said, it was basically intent versus impact. So if he goes into work and he tells a colleague that she looks beautiful in a dress, that maybe she's having a great day, she looks lovely. And he just says that to be kind because she looks lovely. And she is offended by that and says, "Please don't ever say that to me again." And he was like, "Well, I just was letting you know. I don't mean any harm by it." He needs to not do that again because the impact of what he has said, although his intent was pure, his impact was negative. And for some reason, that crystallized it for me, that moment. It was like our intent versus how things are being received. And to pay back on what Amanda's saying, like mascots are supposed to be for everybody, right? And something where you could buy your stuff and wear it. And you don't just have a name, but you have something cool that sort of, you have like the caricature, a good caricature, whatever people end up selling on, right? And that's something that's for everybody, and nobody needs to worry that they're not being included. And I think that's something that we need to focus on. As well as now we know that there's scientific evidence that this causes harm. So although we say, you know, what about other students, right? So we have potential impact on Native students. Well, what about other students? And I think about if this were anything else in our public schools that was dangerous. And we said, okay, so we would do something to take care of it right away. Is there a rate on gas? We need to do something right away. And if it was only impacting some students, if it was dangerous, we would still do something about it right away. We now have not scientific evidence that this is dangerous to a group of students. And finally, I think that the life lessons that we're trying to teach around diversity, equity, and inclusion, like the ability to receive feedback from people who have different lived experiences, and then to listen to that feedback with a genuine curiosity rather than, and learn from it, rather than taking offense, is really key to this, to say, you know, "Tell me more about that. I want to hear more about that." I don't think that, I don't think that saying that you're sorry to see the mascot go means that you have racist intent. What I believe that if you're sorry to see the mascot go, it's a growing pain and it's changed, and that's difficult. But I think there needs to be a genuine curiosity and a recognition that it's of its impact on folks of Native backgrounds.
And I use that word racist because in some of the emails and the correspondence that we have, it's been saying for those, are those that do not want to change, change that, being called that, including, you know, ourselves in many different ways, being called different names. So that's where that came from.
Absolutely. I think that's what's, I think that's what's hard too is, is, you know, when I look back at my time in high school, you know, I picture in my yearbook of me with like somebody in a Native American, like a mascot costume, the head, the wearing that you couldn't tell who was inside, that whole thing. And I'm like, does that make me never, again, open that yearbook? No, it makes me look back and say, man, I've sure learned a lot since then. You know, and I'm glad that my community, where my mom still lives, I'm glad that there was that growth taken so that all students can really get behind. And I think they're the Thunderbirds or something like that.
So we have gotten a lot of information that we have, that we've gotten from Native American tribes, people, local people, national people. We also have a board who saved a lot of letters. At work, we say 275 emails were one way, we read the other. What I do want the people who are listening to know, and I've said this before, when you send a letter to the Board of Education, it is now public knowledge, is available, and we can put it out there. So one of the things that I'd like to do is put together, old-fashioned, I know some of you are going to say we can put that down electronically, but put together a couple of binders. I want a binder in front of me to review as I go through this. With every letter that I've received, every letter we've received from the Native American tribes, the tribal nations, I want that all in front of me. Then I want to see the information from this group called NAGA. I know we touched on that, and I've been trying to do some research on there. And what I understand from this group is that it was started around 2015 and made as a for-profit company. Because I might understand a for-profit organization that was started to keep the Washington Risking Football Team, to help them keep their name. And that's the information that I have. I've also heard some things that many Native American tribes do not recognize that organization. And many of the people within that organization are not Native American. Those are some of the things that I'm just looking at. I need to do a deeper dive into that, but I don't know if anyone here has had the opportunity to do that.
I've spent a good amount of time looking at the organization because I think it's very interesting, and I have been seeking out an alternate point of view. They are not-for-profit, but they claim 60 years of not-for-profit status. But they only actually achieved not-for-profit status in 2013. So that's, that's one thing. I did get a communication from the head of Indigenous Student Union at Yukon about this group because I wanted to get her perspective on it. And it was not great. I'm not going to read it here because it's not great. And then, you know, they prominently feature videos from PragerU and Turning Point USA, which, you know, GLAD, which is Gay and Lesbian Alliance, has said that they have ties to white supremacy. The ADL, the American Defamation League, has flagged these folks. And, you know, you can feel one way about them or another, but looking at secondary sources is really important. So I wanted to look at them and use them as a counterbalance to some of the medical research that we have seen and received. But I do not feel comfortable doing that based on the sourcing here. I know that they often reach out to boards that are in the middle of making this decision, and that's, that's their prerogative. It's great country, right? But to me, when I was going through and I watched several of their videos, I have a tough time lending credence to them because of the information that I've gotten from the ADL and from GLAD on them.
Indian male. They were just brought, you know, I know we did some due diligence before our last workshop. We had brought it up, but they were recently brought up to be. So I have been really starting to do some research on them. So anyway, going back into there, so I want to have...
Got it. Got it. Started that one.
No, sorry, no.
If I just going to say a couple of things. What struck me in a newspaper article was the Guilford Indians, who are also the Indians, have retired their mascot. And I believe one of the, I don't know who it was in the district, said a mascot is, can be a unifying force for the town, for the team. And my question is, we have a mascot that is dividing the town, and that's a big concern. big concern. The second thing is that when you're reading all the material and reading articles from the American Psychological Association, there's, it comes to one argument that having the Indian name or the industry is harmful to students. It's not because there's top 10 different reasons. That is the chief reason. I, I really haven't heard any other argument. And I think as, as leaders in the town, you know, in the, on the board, we have to say, you know, again, follow the science and if this is the case, do, and if we believe it, which I do, I think we have to make a change. Now, I, I understand there's a real emotional attachment to our mascot that is probably, while the high school was built, I think the orange belt's in 1961. So it goes back 60 years. I don't want to erase those memories for the, for the people that played sports and, and I don't think retiring our mascot, our name and our mascot detracts from those memories. It's just another group of people making new memories. And what, what's very clear to me and just the emails that we've seen in the last couple of weeks is the residents are looking for us to take action. They want us to take a vote. And, you know, I know we're not going to do it tonight, but I mean, I think we do have to come to the point and say, look, either we're going to keep the, the Indian name or we're not. And I hope that we can do that before the start of the new school year, July 1st, so.
You know, you bring up a point about the people want to vote. He said, you know, that we're not going to vote. There's a lot of controversy or there had been controversy because many people feel that, um, they should go to a town vote or a town advisory vote, um, and that we should make our decision based on, on that. One of the things I'd like to say is again, when we have the vote, the Board of Education, this is because we're talking about school and the, uh, school issues, it is our, under our realm to make these decisions and it's not a town decision to do it. You know, we, we vote for that. I, I know I keep trying to educate on that, um, to say, once again, we are not responsible for anything from the town. Street names do not get changed. Montluie School does not get changed. Anything that is considered honorific does not get changed. The only thing we're looking at is as a Board of Education is, well, we have retired the caricature, but is, do we continue with the name the Indians or not? And that's what we're looking at. That's why we're having this conversation. That's why we're getting this information. That's why we're listening to people. Because that's our job. That's what we need to do. And then we need to make a decision that is the best decision for all of our students. And from there, from there, we, we look at different, different things to do. So whatever decision we make, our decision is for our students. I did want to acknowledge at the beginning of this, the people who have been in sports, who have been longtime North Haven people, who have looked at, uh, identified so much with the mascot from their high school years, et cetera, et cetera. But we need to look at this for the benefit of our, of our students. And tonight we had several students speak up to us. We had one student talk about how she, her, the discrimination she went through as an elementary child. Those are the things that we as a board have to take into account when we make our decision. And I'm saying this for the people who are listening to this on Facebook Live. This is a, this is what we are, we are here to do. You know, I'm sure there's a lot of comments being made and it's what we do. This is what we're doing. We're trying to just make, do the right thing for our students. I know I sound like a broken record.
But it's true, Nina, you know, we really, that everybody on this board is really here for the kids. We're here for the students. Nobody's making money off of this, I assure you. Like that's not, that's not what's happening.
But to go back to, um, the book that I was talking about, I think it's important, and I know we have it on our webpage, but I, I almost think, and I'm going to tell you where I got this from, important that we put together the, the binders, like either in a physical binder or put something on our webpage. I think it's very important for all community members to read the information we have, to see the information we have. I recently went on the website of, um, a Board of Education, um, that changed their name, retired their name back in, um, I think it's January, February. Town's a little different. It may not have had the whole, uh, the history that we had with the Indian name, but I, I looked at each thing that they did and I read, um, several of the letters that were written by, uh, the tribe. And one of them, and I just picked it, put it up here on my phone, is from the, um, it was written on behalf of the Mashentucket Peqbot Tribal Nation, who I have a call out to them, um, to, um, speak to me or when we have our meeting, come out and speak at our meeting when we vote. And it's clearly in here. It's hard to see off here, but it's clearly in here, um, that they feel that the name is offensive to Native, the name Indians is offensive to Native Americans. They, um, I don't want to go in there. They, but yet I'm going to try and get a copy of this letter and have it come for us. Number one they're saying is Native Americans are people, not, not mascots, nor should their cultures be misappropriated as such. Native mascots or school nicknames perpetuate a stereotype and racism that harm Native and non-Native students. So I'm just going to leave on that. So that sentence right there when he said, um, that we should not be, be using Native Americans as our people, not mascots, and that their culture should not be misappropriated as such. Now, I'm just repeating that because almost this is very much similar to what the people who are Native American in our town had said. And, you know, I'm going back and forth with different things, but I'm really trying to get a dialogue here because we're having a workshop to discuss the pros and the cons. So I keep going back and forth to talk about the history of, of keeping the Native American name, um, so keeping the Indian name versus what the new things are that we're getting.
So you're saying cultural appropriation versus cultural appreciation?
Right.
So that's what I think we need to talk about. You know, you have, you have folks who obviously want to have the cultural appreciation side of things, right? We don't want to see the Native history canceled, I think is the way people are talking about it. But what's, when something is reduced to a mascot and boiled down to that, or even just a sports team name, that's not really cultural appreciation, that's cultural appropriation. That's taking from that culture, just something out of context. It's decontextualizes it and it's just, it removes everything that makes it, that brings the honor to it, right? So I think we need to understand that we can have the cultural appreciation, but not in the form of a team name that would just be taking it to the other side of appropriation. But we want to keep the appreciation, but there's a place for that. Yeah.
Um, Jen, let me just, let me just go back a little bit. When you talk about the gentleman went to work and says, says to his coworker, he looked beautiful today, right? Because I think really what we're talking about are just words. We're talking about some words that have this great effect, one way or the other on people. So this guy goes in there, sees the woman, says, hey, you look beautiful today. And she takes offense to that. So immediately we're taking the position that he shouldn't be calling anyone beautiful.
No, to her.
Okay.
Her, in particular.
In his mind, he said, well, I just, I called the girl beautiful. She didn't like it. What happens when I call the next girl beautiful? Do I become a persistent offender now because I'm using the word beautiful? And that's what I don't get. I have four daughters and a wife, I go home every day, I tell them they're beautiful five times a day, every day. That's the way I talk to them. I have other friends who I, you know, we talk about, hey, you look great today. I'm glad you're here today, you look great, you dress sharp or whatever the case is. So I don't, I don't think that when you use those words, you're never going to be 100% positive with everyone you say that to. It's just a mathematical impossibility. And I think it's the same with the word Indian, whether it's American Indian, Native American, whatever you want. If you are trying to bring in an educational standard that involves the history of American Indians, right, from North Haven into the curriculum, you are doing it in an honorific fashion. When you name the school Montluie, it's in an honorific fashion. When you do all these other things, it's an honorific fashion. To think that you took the name Indian and applied it to a team name to demoralize them makes no sense to me. You've done all these, you've done all these other things where you're honoring. So now you're saying, well, the one time you use this name, you can't use it in a team reference. Mascot, I get because caricatures are meant to be other than serious. That's what a caricature is. So we both get rid of the caricature. I'm 100% behind that. The name itself, I don't understand yet how you separate all the honorific ways you use that name in the town and in the school system, except the one. It's just like calling that woman beautiful. The one person doesn't like it, I have 10 elders that do. I don't, I don't get where, you know, people are, and they're saying a lot of nasty things about us, all of us in general, about the conversations we're having, but because we're here, we need to have these conversations.
You're asking me some questions though. I'd love to be able to break it down to them.
Yeah, you will, you will. Soon as I figure out how to end it, you can, you can go. So I'm, I'm just, you know, again, I'm, I'm just confused about that word. And in that one instance, it's so offensive and so, and just so polarizing.
I think the connection between what, I can't remember Talia's last name, I'm so sorry, but Mr., what was it? Oh yeah, so Mr. Gallagher. I think what he was trying to say, and I go back to it, is the impact on that person, right? So where that goes with Indian is that we have heard from all sorts of Indigenous and Native folks around here that that is offensive to them. So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be in the person who is saying it, right? It wouldn't be under their purview to determine whether or not it was offensive, right? So I think his point in saying this is that he's a man, he's saying this to a woman and she's taking it a certain way and she makes her, she then makes her position known. And at that point, he's like, oh, I had no idea. And so then he course corrects, right? That's not saying, of course, that's not saying that telling anybody they're beautiful is an act of harassment. I'm saying in this particular case, this one person who doesn't represent all women, right? So in this one person.
But the word course correct does. Course correct means you change.
With her.
Well, with her, so you changed it with her, but not.
Exactly.
I, I get it, but what I'm saying, you say course correct, if you take it generally, it means he changed the way he goes about his business.
See, what I'm talking about with this one particular instance, I'm making that very clear. I'm not suggesting he does that with all women. However, might he then, you're right, might he then think twice before saying that to somebody else? Yes, that's possibly true. We've now been told by all sorts of Native folks, hey, I understand that your intent is pure. I understand that you mean no harm. We're telling you that is not how this is being received. Please don't do that anymore. And so we're continuing to do that, saying, you're fine, we don't mean any harm. But they've already told us that it's harmful and we have science that says it's harmful. So no matter what we say, we now have new information from 1960, whatever. Back then, I was very clear in saying, in my own personal history, growing up, I had no idea, but since then have learned an awful lot and now recognize, I don't beat myself up about it and I don't say, oh man, how could you do that stuff? I say, oh, I'm sort of like, it's sort of like an aha sort of situation. However, if I step on your foot and you say, Jen, please don't do that again, I'm standing right here. And I say, oh my gosh, I'm so sorry, I didn't even realize. And then I just ignore you and I keep stepping on your foot, that's a problem. The first time though, you know that it was an accident and then I've learned, I need to be careful, you're standing there. But I, I'm oversimplifying, but what I'm trying to say is we have heard loud and clear, not only do people take offense and are bothered by this, and loads and loads of people who, we can't tell somebody of Native descent that how we're deciding to use their name shouldn't be offensive if they're, these are people that are saying, this is problematic for us. And we have scientific evidence that this negatively impacts our children. Then we have an obligation as a board to do something about that. I was just using Talia's dad's example because that's what was the light bulb for me. Because back in 2015, when we first started this discussion, I thought there was a way that we could do this. I was like, oh, we could just use this honorific, we could educate, we could add this to the curriculum. I didn't understand fully. Once he mentioned that, a light bulb went off and then I went and learned more and more and more on, on my own and I was like, oh, now I understand. But prior to that, I felt differently, just because I just didn't, I just didn't know. But I think that now that we're hearing all these voices of people of this background telling us, you guys got it wrong. I think that there's something that we need to, we need to listen to that. Not stop trying to honor things, but honoring it in the right context.
And who's going to determine the right context?
Education is the right context.
But we're, we're trying to determine the right context for the name of the team, the sports team. Obviously, people think we're doing it wrong. When you come to do the educational program of introducing that culture into the curriculum, are we going to be doing that wrong?
No, because you actually invite the culture, the folks from the culture to design the curriculum as partners with you. We can't be white folks saying, hey, we're going to, we're going to decide what Native stuff we're going to do. No, we don't have, we don't have a right to do that. We invite folks from that heritage to join us and to help us along that path.
Okay, so we're, so, so we'll have, we'll have those people come in and we'll have them teach the curriculum or at least program it, you know, get it, so how we present it in order to, what, honor the Indians, right? And honor the American Indian.
Well, to teach the his, the history of the area in an accurate way.
Okay. And I believe that would be honoring them. Okay, because here we all are, right? So, and we, and we do mention them in every part of our, our daily existence here in town. So you have that and then you have the kid going to Montluie School and he says, ma, what's Montluie? So, you know, it's an Indian tribe and this and that. You know, you should be very proud of that. Okay, so I can be proud of that. I can be proud of the education. If I'm 10 years old, I'm saying, well, ma, why can't we name our football team Indians? Everything else has been positive, positive, positive. Why is it so negative if you're telling me that, you know, this culture is so, so great? Well, why aren't we honored? Why, why isn't it an honor to do that? And that's where I'm having the problem. Everything is, it just seems very selective to me that it's, you make all these opportunities for honor, making honorific the name, okay, in the, in the culture, which I agree with. There's a lot of things going on in the town. Absolutely agree with it and it should be the way it is. To selectively take the one is, is just difficult for, a little bit for me to understand right now because when you say that, well, we're, we're, we're trying to tear them down by doing that, we just did, there's 500 examples I can give you where we don't. Why would I pick a team name to demoralize you after I've done all this other? And I, I don't get that. And I think that's from the people that I'm talking to in town that are, that are getting a hold of me, are saying the same thing. We're, we're, we're doing all these things and we, and we honor them all the time. I, I don't understand how it's the one thing that is so, is such a trigger.
Because you're reducing an entire race of people to one name that isn't really utilized by that whole group of people, but so that it's an inaccurate name and you're reducing them down to something we use for sport. And, and so when a kid, like you're saying, goes to their parents and saying, why, first of all, I think that's an unlikely scenario. I think that this is a historical thing, nobody.
Well, we're using, we're using six and eight-year-olds in the letters that we're getting all the time and we're saying that they're so upset that I'm using a 10-year-old figuring that that would be okay.
Okay, all right. So because I think parents, parents, um, these days, for lack of a better term, are having a lot more open conversations about equity with their kids and about race, and those kinds of conversations are happening much, with much more, with much greater frequency and much greater prevalence. It's really part of like the child rearing package for a lot of folks these days. So I think those conversations are happening. And I think that that question that you're suggesting could be asked is an opportunity for parents to talk about why mascots about people are different than the history that they're having at school. The history that they're having at school would be nonfiction. It would be, like you're saying, if it's done properly, it would be something that honors folks, and it would teach them history. But then to carry that over into something else, an entire race of people who still remains oppressed, that's another thing that we're not really talking about. This is a group of folks that is struggling in this country incredibly right now. And so that's, that's where the sort of the waters get really murky and where we have a responsibility to, to have our education just keep it where it belongs, educationally and respectfully. But when we go into the sports team, that, that takes away all this stuff that makes, that makes, it takes an entire culture and just boils it down to a mascot.
Yeah. Jen, to add on to that just a little bit, like I think what is considered honorific is a great question. I think that is a great question, and like, are we listening to the people that we are trying to honor when we're considering what is honorific? Are they asking us to name buildings after them? Probably, maybe. I think that is, is traditionally considered an honorific, but I could fully be wrong about that, right? And that's okay. Are they asking us to have a sports team named after them? It's a mixed bag. It's, it's a very mixed bag. And I think we have statements from official tribal leadership asking us to not do that. So like the way that I was thinking about it was, you know, education is, is great, and I've actually, I've seen our district come a long way in educating this, even over the past few years. My son is in second grade and is learning nonfiction history about Native Americans, the Native Americans indigenous to this land. My daughter just learned about the Trail of Tears. That's not Connecticut native history, but it is, it was an honest unit about the Trail of Tears, which I, I was really happy about. I'm not saying that we don't have miles to go before we sleep, but I think that that is a good first step, and I'm so happy and so thankful to you folks that we're doing that. Also, I think that, that we're gonna have to change. We're in a time of incredible change. I, I know, Melinda, you do so much work around curriculum, and the curriculum changes a lot. The likelihood of us putting together a Native American curriculum that's perfect, even if we do bring in native people, is slim to none. It's going to change, you know, and I think we're gonna need to be able to be flexible as those things change. I don't think anybody means this in a demeaning way. I, I really honestly don't. And the few people who have reached out to me to talk to me about it have been very genuine, and they want to have good faith conversations about this. And I, I encourage other folks to reach out to me if, if, if you feel that way too, because I, I haven't heard from very many. I, I think people do legitimately mean it as an honorific, but like what is an honorific can't be decided by, I don't feel comfortable saying that, that that's my decision. I would feel much more comfortable listening to the native voices who've told us we don't consider this one thing to be honorific.
Um, so I said a lot of things last time. So I'm, I'm just gonna say some of the stuff I said then again, so that we could try to kind of bring a balance here, right? Because that's all I'm trying to do, is bring a balance. I'm gonna say it again, bring a balance, okay? So in some context and perception of where I'm coming from is that my great-grandfather survived a genocide, or I wouldn't be here. And that to, you know, my culture is very important, you know, that people know about it and are educated about it. And I, there was one letter that Anita showed me yesterday that did talk about the Trail of Tears and the genocide. And of course, that rings very true to my heart, like my heart is beating very hard right now. So, and I'm only sharing this because we, we've talked a lot about diversity, and we've talked a lot about cultures, and we're talking a lot about race and so on and so forth. And I've got to tell you, being a first-generation kid, although I look the way I look, right? Lighter blonde hair, lighter skin tone. I and my husband, my husband and I, we're both first generation, and we have endured our fair share of derogatory comments based on our culture. I still adore a lot of those comments when people make jokes about our last name. Everybody can see how long it is and all the vowels in it, okay? We still get that, okay? And I try every time to use it as an opportunity to educate people on why our last name is our last name, how our last name started, and, and so on and so forth. So there's, there's two sides, right? And we talked about this the other day. And, and I don't think either side is wrong. And I think our job here is to try to bring both sides together, right? I said this last time. So I hope everybody's actually hearing what I'm saying. And I think where Ron's coming from, and then you also said it, Amanda, you said it's like a mixed bag on whether or not the sports team should be named, you know, Native American mascot, so on and so forth. There are, and I think, you know, we talked about this a little bit last time too. There are teams that have these agreements with tribes, and I know the tribes in Connecticut are saying, get rid of it. But there are teams that have agreements with tribes that do make it okay. And I think that's where people are like, well, it's okay here, but it's not okay there, but it's okay here, and it's not okay there. So I think we're back to the discussion of whose choice is this? Who can tell if it's right or wrong, right? And I think to just throw blanket statements out there about, you know, how one person feels or how the other person feels kind of isn't fair to anybody because we really don't know people's backgrounds. We don't know their perceptions on the issues. I think we need to really open up our minds and our eyes and kind of listen to everybody and put ourselves in other people's shoes and kind of try to understand where they're coming from too. On the, you know, the one side where maybe we haven't gotten as much information on, like, Amanda, you said there's like two seventy-five and only six that you had received wanted to keep it or something like that. So I've gotten a lot of information from folks that do want to keep it. And again, I, I'm just trying to play both sides of the coin here, so that as a board, we can show that we can have a rational discussion with each other, and we're not full of emotion when we're making these decisions, although right now I'm a little full of emotion. That we can, we can also teach our students, though, that we can have a conversation, and we can understand each other, and we can look at each other and understand each other's perspectives, and try to come to some sort of an agreement in a rational way that has some sort of process. I think that's huge. A lot of people on the, well, one, I don't remember who it was, but I think a couple of folks feel like we need to lead by example. We definitely need to lead by example, and I think that example should be that we can have a rational conversation from all sides of this perspective, and then try to come up with what is okay, right? And I think this is where we're sticking though, because we don't know what's okay, what's not okay, whose decision this is and whose decision it's not. So, I mean, I get what, you know, Jen and Amanda, what you guys are saying, what Dot said. Ron, I, I understand what you're saying. Anita, you've tried to kind of bring out both aspects of every, all the information that we're getting. And I, I don't know, like, is there a way that this can be okay based on, you know, folks that are, they're not using Indian. One school is, but that's under like, that's a different story. I feel like they're kind of out here. But I know like Utah uses the Utes, right? That's the name of the, of the tribe. Oh, is that okay? Of the, yeah. At least that's what the Memorandum of Understanding said. It was in the, it was in the packet from last time. And I apologize if I said the name wrong. But they, they use the name of the actual tribe. So they're not using the name Indian, but I guess what I'm trying to say is, again, like, it's okay over, over here, but it's not okay over there. And I think that's where people are getting super confused. That's all. Like, I'm not saying I'm taking one side or the other. I'm just trying to say, like, let's try to understand, like, where everybody's coming from and see if there's a way that we can bridge the gap somehow. And I think that's a great example to show as well.
Alani, I hear you on that completely. And what I just keep coming back to, though, is the fact that the Connecticut tribes are asking us to not use them as a mascot.
Right.
All the ones that we've reached out to have universally said, please don't. You know, they're not asking us to have the cheerleaders do a performative dance about land trusts during halftime. They're not asking us to, to really do anything aside from just retire the mascot, you know? They want us, and it's, it's been fairly clear, and it's not from like one or two people within the tribes. It's the official position of the tribes. They don't want to be used as a sports team mascot. So I hear what you're saying, and like, if, if the tribes had said to us, like, we feel honored by this, that would be a totally different story. We'd be having a completely different conversation right now. But that's not what they're saying. That's, they have reached out, and, and we had students come in here too who have either emailed us or come to give public comment, who said that this makes them like feel bad about, about school year. And, and to me, that's kind of a lie, you know?
And what I'm saying is, is there a way to, that, like, it would be okay? I don't know. Is there a different way to present it? So I'm just trying to find a way that everybody, so it's always hard to make everybody happy, and we're not ever gonna make everybody happy, but I, I just think the process of what we're doing in, a lot, like, a lot of things are being referenced from two thousand fifteen. And I have to be honest with you, like, I know nothing of what happened in two thousand fifteen, and maybe that's my bad. Like, I should do my research on it. But I, I know what's happening right now, and I know the current state of what's happening now. So I don't know what happened in two thousand fifteen. I, I've gathered information from what we've talked about here. So I just, like, we just need to make sure that we are looking at it here in this lens in our town. And what's funny is I was thinking about like my high school, and I was like, you know, well, you know, I obviously remember a mascot. But also the, I think a difference in why people are so attached to it, you know, right, wrong, and different, right? I'm not, I'm just sharing points of views. Is that there's one high school in town, right? There's not multiple high schools. So I feel like that also makes a huge difference in a small town when you have the one school that's kind of representative of, you know, so much. Is, so I think there's where we see some differences on maybe why people are so, and this is just me talking through. I've probably said way more than I wanted to say tonight, but, um, you know, I just, you know, the rational conversation, the making sure we're following a process is huge. And I, you know, I think that's, I'm just trying to take what Ron is saying with other things that I've heard, but I've also gotten a lot of information to get rid of it, and, you know, I take that stuff very seriously based on, you know, what my culture has gone through and, you know, what I went through growing up and still go through. And questions my kids get asked is-
Exhausting, right?
Well, it, it's exhausting, but we also teach the kids to, like, my daughter's name is, her first name is thirteen letters long, and you can count her last name, how long it is. And people always joke like, why'd you do that to her? And I'm like, it's not wrong that we did that to her. It's just part of who we are. It's part of our culture. We name our kids after their grandparents. Like, it's just, it's a thing. So we, we teach them to not get upset when they're made fun of. Even like a couple of weeks ago was the, our Easter, when we celebrated Easter, but it's not when most people celebrate Easter. So they were getting peppered with questions about that. And I said, it's okay that people are asking you questions. You just educate them on why they're asking you those questions, you know? And I mean, for an eight-year-old to try to explain a lot of this stuff is pretty interesting. But, you know, I, I try to, we try as a family, and what my parents instilled in me and my husband's parents instilled in him is, you know, it, it is offensive sometimes, and it is, I'm sure you've all watched the movie, right? So, you know, I, it, it does get a little exhausting sometimes, but it's also an opportunity for us to educate on our culture and on our background and why we do certain things. And some people are just gonna continue to laugh at us, but I mean, I can't change everybody's mind either.
I hope they don't continue to laugh at you, because I mean-
But they will, Amanda.
It's a beautiful culture.
You think that, but some, other people don't understand it. So this, I'm just trying to say, like, it's, like, I, I understand all the points of view is what I'm trying to say, and I, I'm just having a lot of trouble, like, trying to find a way to navigate this that we can not please everybody, because we can't please everybody, but to try to make it so that, you know, everybody feels that they have been, their voice has been heard, and that we've done our due diligence to allow them to share their points of view, and that we're actually considering their points of view, is, is what I'm trying to say.
I really hope that people do feel like we are listening to them because-
They don't.
I, I have read tons of social media posts. I have put my name out there for people to contact. I read every email and respond to like ninety-two percent of them as long as I have time. You know, so like I do want to hear from people. That's what I'm here for.
Right.
That's why I'm, I sit on this board. But I would, I'd like to just say, like, I don't see a way where we can move forward with the Indian name, but I do think that it is critical for, if we're going to fully retire the mascot, to take steps to make sure that the people who feel like they're losing something get something happens. Like, not-
Not get something out of it, but understand the context and why.
That we hear them, right?
Yeah.
A badge was a warning.
Yeah.
But whether or not, I've had people say, can we put up, can we put up some kind of a statue? Can we, can we get a plaque? Can we teach about it in schools? Like, I, I'm on board for all of those things. Can we, can we have tribes come and educate our, our students in person? Like, I'm for that. I don't speak for all of us, but like, I personally like co-sign right away on that. So to me, I think it's not a surprise to any of you that like I would like to change the mascot and pick something that, that I can feel comfortable wearing a sweatshirt with like a silly wolf or something on it. I don't know.
A cool wolf.
A cool wolf, like a, a bad man, a gentle wolf, whatever, you know, e- either way.
As we have this conversation, have this conversation, I wrote a couple of notes.
I think that- Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, Anita, I didn't mean to cut you off, but she's been trying to talk for a while.
Go ahead. Okay, Ma. Stop.
Can I just ask a question?
Only if you could speak, only if you speak within your phone.
Get closer. Get closer to the-
Oh, okay.
There you go.
Perfect.
My question, or my statement, and my question is, for some of us, you know, when Alani mentioned two thousand fifteen, this is a conversation that's now going into its seventh year with some stops and some starts. Do we have a timeline as how we're gonna proceed? Because we do know people that are saying, it's a very common thing, they, they want us to take a vote. And, and again, I'm gonna go back to the crucial, the overarching question is, is this har, if this is horrible, the, the science is saying this is harmful to students. Stereotypical, stereotyping race of people is harmful. Well, if that's the case, then we better make a decision after we've listened to everybody. Either yes, it is, and we change, or no. So I just kind of like to know where we're gonna go from here, so that we're not sitting here five years from now having the same discussion.
I think it's super important to maybe show that timeline. Anita, you were saying like, you know, put more stuff up so the public can see it, like maybe showing that whole timeline? Because a lot of people may have just moved here. Again, like I lived here in two thousand fifteen, but my kids were really little. So I still don't fully grasp the whole timeline, and I'm on the board, so maybe that will help.
So there's a couple of things I, I will put together of our timeline. But what I listen to, and I want people who feel that the Board of Ed should keep the Indian name. I want them to understand what, what the role of the Board of Ed is for our students. And that's what I want to perhaps educate a little more, that what the role is. And we would be derelict in our duties if we do not respect each and every child. Now, I know, and I spoke to some other Native American people within our town who, their children, and they are not offended by the name Indian. So you're getting back and forth. But our, our job as the Board of Ed is to respect and watch out for every child that's in our town. And I just don't want us to lose sight of what our responsibility is. And I don't want people who are listening to us and who, who are, are so- And I don't want people who are listening to us and who are so faithful to that Indian mascot from all their years and the great things that it did, I want them to under, I want them to know that this is where we're going up, our responsibility for our children. And that's what I want to get across in this workshop. And that's where, you said, where are we going, Dot? The point is a timeline, the education. We have heard from different Native tribes, we have heard from, I'm even gonna put Nagat in there. We've heard from Nagat, we've heard different things. But what we've heard from and what we've seen, that we've heard and seen, things from our children, see tonight, talking about, from our children. I don't know what happened to that young girl when she was at Montague School. I don't want that to ever happen again, ever happen to any student again. But that's what we have to work on as a board. Where do we go with this inclusiveness and diversity and social emotional awareness that we have spent so much time on in the last two years? These are the things I want the public to know, that we have worked on. So I'm trying to just kind of write this back up, I want to get into that binder. I want to have, open for the public, I even be happy to take it to the library, but we'll have it on our website, our whole timeline, the letters that we get from the little tribes, the letters we get on both sides of this, from people, have them right there for everyone to see. Have them understand the work that we've done, but also, if you're some people who feel that it's important to keep the name, someone recently told me something, tell me your story. I want to understand your story, why it's, why this name is important to you in life, that it honors the American, when so many are saying it's... That's kind of where I'm going for it, to wrap this up a little bit, but that's the idea. You know, like, yeah, I mean, I'm willing, I'm happy working with students. Um, you know, we can start doing, we can start doing, you know, we'll get this together, we'll get it there. I want to have the community have an opportunity to see the thing. Because like June, although I keep thinking, and even recently, I keep thinking to me, and sometimes I am torn on this, I'm not, I'm not gonna say, sometimes I think, you're tired of that, Indian name, other times I think, okay, you know, it's okay. I'm gonna go back and forth, you go back, you go back and forth. I just want everyone to have the same information that we do and understand where we've gotten the information, when we made a vote, whatever that, the results of those votes will be.
I think that's...
If I may, one other, the other thing that I'm going to say that keeps coming back to me, and I haven't had a lot of opportunity lately to reflect on it, but the Board of Education 2015, 2016 stopped using the caricature, and we stopped using the Indian name. Why did we do that in 2015, and why are we talking about that today? And that's where I need to go back and reflect on all of that from 2015 to 2021.
Do you think it would be possible, in the spirit of Alani, who loves a compromise, right? Do you think it would be possible for us to put together this binder and give everybody an opportunity to review information and try to have a vote prior to, what did you say, Dot?
The school year.
Is it the new school year or is it July? You're on mute. You're still on mute, Dot.
Can she hear you?
Okay, there you go.
She's gonna yell.
I originally suggested July 1st, because that's the beginning of a new fiscal school year. But the problem is, that's the middle of the summer. I just, I mean, do you think it's in the best interest of the board and students and the community to have this going to the next school year?
No, I don't really like that.
No, but I don't think we should vote in the, I don't think we should vote in the middle of the summer, because I think, like, I don't know, it was planning...
You really, really have until end dish of August? I mean, it's kind of even close, but you're still making a decision on the name before the school year starts.
About the four preseason, right? Because isn't this all about sports?
Right.
Preseason usually starts the last two weeks of August.
Right, middle of August, right? August, like, fifteenth, sixteenth.
What do you think on the sport?
We usually do, it's not, I think it's July, yeah.
Is it silly to say, this might be so silly, so just bear with me? Would it be silly to take a couple of those binders and, like, put them in the library? And people could go, ah, the library? Okay, I hear you say the library.
I'd be happy to put them anywhere. I just want everyone to understand that whatever decision that we make as a board, the amount of research that has gone in it, the amount of play that's going back and forth. Yeah, I love being at Vanacore Field, we say, you know, years ago, it has right there, home of the Indians. And by the way, I do want to just say, Vanacore Field is not owned by the Board of Education, it is owned by the town. So if this Indian name and the caricature will still be there, because it's a building that is a property and concession stand that is owned by the town. And those are things we have to actually talk about. And again, I want to remind everyone that we voted to retire the caricature. We did not vote to delete the caricature. That caricature prior to, anything that was there prior to March 13th, 2021, will still be there.
That's really important for people to, like, we're not trying to erase anybody's history at all.
Right. Where they go in that high school trophy case, you're gonna see the North Haven Indians. You're going to, I believe we have a gift at one of the fields that says, North Haven Indians, that was given to us by one of the classes. That stays, because that's all part of the tournament.
I think that's a critical difference in moving forward versus erasing history.
Right.
And I think that as a board, we all agree, nobody wants to erase history. But I think moving forward, you just do things differently. You know, you don't have to take away things that have already been there.
Our meeting in August is like the 12th, right? I mean, we said the 12th?
Should be the 12th, yeah.
You, why not set it for the 12th of August? That kind of gives you, otherwise you're only, you know, six weeks away.
I won't be here. We'll find you. I'll be away, can't we find you, doing wise? I don't know, they have that. Are you going that long week?
Yeah.
So... Well, why don't we just make the decision that we are going to vote on this? In our, our, right now, tentatively, we will vote for this in our August meeting.
Can you do a mail-in?
Can we just ask that if we're going to wait until August, can we just ask that people don't go to other people's houses to talk about this topic if they are not invited? That people be cautious about the emails that they send and be respectful in the emails? And like, let's make sure that the tone kind of comes down a little bit between now, this is a long time.
They should do that anyways.
Between, well...
Yeah, in any email that's being sent, I just, you know, I think that's across the board.
Yeah, don't think you can send an anonymous email either, we'll find you.
There's some queries being sent, yeah.
Can I go back here about the binder that I was thinking about putting together? Can we do a, I don't know what we call it, a Facebook page or something where we have that information for people to look at, read, and maybe comment on? And maybe we take one or two people from the Board of Ed who would be responsible to answer the comments. You know, it's something I'm thinking about. It's just something that I, I'm just trying to think, because people may look at this and have the same questions that we may have.
Yeah, I think, carefully, people have to be careful, though, you don't want a couple of people speaking on behalf of the board.
Well, you don't want people taking, well, and you don't want, like, people taking things that are up there and, you know...
Yeah, you're right. And I'm just kind of, this is part of what we're having, the idea of a workshop, finding the best way to get it out to all people.
Can we have, like, an email that goes to somebody, and if you have a question about some of the information, then it, like, we can create an email.
Hundred percent.
We're on Google, so, I mean, we could probably steer it.
And maybe we can funnel all the emails back through somebody central? Like, maybe a couple of us could be on point for replying to them, but they get funneled through a centralized location so that we avoid the perception even of one person talking on behalf of the board, because I, I don't want to do that.
Right.
But I'm happy to help crack responses if anybody is interested.
Well, I think you said it in the beginning of our last meeting, too, Anita, like, we, you know, we're bipartisan, we're looking at this through a lens that's, you know, inclusive and trying to do what's best for the school and the students.
I think people can go back to the stuff that we designed last, last summer. There was a lot of good information there, a lot of these studies are included.
Are they, are they in a way that's easy to just pull them out?
No, it's not easy to find that site either. Like, I even Google, I was trying to Google it, and I couldn't get to the Board of Education site. I actually could only get to the site through a news article that had, like, from, named some of the news, the local news...
I think it's on Facebook, it's on our Facebook page.
Yeah, not everybody's on Facebook, though.
No, but if people want to, they can get to it, and we could also put it on the district page, though, for sure.
Yeah, I'm just saying it was hard, like, not everybody is on Facebook, I know we can get there, but even just Googling it and trying to, like, get it on the district site, I couldn't get to it easy.
Maybe we could put a tab.
Okay, well, let's talk, yeah, we'll figure that out, but I also want to organize those. And I, and I'm gonna work with Joyce on this binder, and perhaps we'll put it, and we'll put tie-ups in there, and we can do the same thing for what we put on electronically.
I'd like to sit in on those meetings, so they can make the binder digital if they're...
Okay. Does that, everyone think there's a good plan forward, path forward?
The only thing that I'm hesitating on is the timeline, sorry, Joe.
Go ahead, Joe.
Well, I'm sorry, the problem with doing it from video, right, stepping on some of those, so, sorry, I'm a bit of a hand up.
You're good.
Um, I, I think it's a great idea to get this information out in whatever way we can get it out. Uh, I think, I don't think, I know, even everything that we've put out there, every single person on this board has done far more than just read what's come in. You know, I don't, I don't sleep at night, I'm on my phone looking at issues related to this two o'clock in the morning, that's never gonna come out in whatever type of binder we put out. But this may be an unpopular opinion to everybody else on the board, but I think we should get through this, this current school year. I think the students have earned the right to have prom, graduate, and be free from the mascot issue or the discussion about the word Indian. But I think waiting much longer than graduation, I just, I just don't see the benefit to it happening. It's, this device of enough in our community, and I think pushing it off for another ninety days or something like that is just, I don't see what benefit that's gonna have to us.
Do you think that gives enough people to review the information if they want to review it?
Or even get it together?
Or even get it together?
I think a lot of this information is not new information to the public. You know, I mean, obviously, the emails and things like that that we've gotten is new information. Not everybody's had the ability to look at that. And quite honestly, I would love to sit down with a binder that has everything that we've gotten and just be able to flip through it myself, it would make it a lot easier than trying to go, you know, scroll up and down on my phone or click on my computer. I think that would be very helpful, but I think a lot of the information that's been out there, we've talked about, it's been out there for people, maybe to be able to look at it and touch it and read it is one thing, but I don't know how much time people really have to spend checking that.
So I'm, I'm kind of on the same, a similar path with Joe on this. I think we have kicked this course for a long, long time, which is a good thing, because it's a very important issue, regardless of what side you are on this issue. But I think, you know, my thought is, you know, I think a date in July may make sense, so that either we vote goes or either direction we go, there is some time for the school and administration to adapt or do whatever they need to do in preparation for the next academic year. So I think August is a bit too late, I think July is a sweet spot to sort of do that after graduation. Because, like Joe rightfully said, we've read all the emails, the materials that we've received, you know, if there are more new materials that we've received, you can share them on the DOE website. So a lot of people can take a look, and not the emails because of privacy issues and things like that. But at least, you know, share the information that we've received from the different tribes or people who have sent in any information from different groups and things like that that we could share publicly. But we have, you know, we have that information available, and so, you know, if we're able to take a look at that, take a look at more information, for those who have not read anything, read everything, I think July is a good time for us to be able to sort of have a vote, and then we're about to do, and, you know, we can, you know, work on whatever direction that, you know, that we need to work on in preparation for the next academic year. I think August is probably a bit too close.
I agree with that.
Well, we don't have a meeting in September, but we can organize, excuse me, in July? But we can, we can organize one.
Okay, 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 I take that back, I take that back. So August, we'll work that, I take that.
We can do a special one, can't we?
Yeah, I'd like to suggest that we have a special meeting in July, to get this decision over with, whichever way it goes. I also think that July is a really good time to do it, because kids are not in school. And so if there is, you know, there are going to be people upset, no matter what the outcome of this vote is, but I would rather it happen when kids are not in one building at the same time, because I don't want any emotions to get heightened and then create any kind of other issues among the students. I would hope that outside of school, the adults in the town can be mature about it and, you know, accept whatever decision comes out and lead by example. But I think that maybe July is a really good time. And then I think it also allows us as a district and teachers and administrators to prepare for the beginning of the year with the change or not, however it turns out. So I would like to suggest that we have a special meeting in July. I think that's a great idea.
I'm fine with that.
Rodney, can I, can I ask a question? The meeting you're requesting for in July is just for, it's not a workshop, is that right?
Goldie, can you talk into your phone?
The meeting would be just for a home, not a workshop.
So, you mean that in July, that you're suggesting it just for vote, it's not a workshop and a vote? You just come in, vote, and, and vote on?
Yeah, or do, don't, wait, but do we, do we usually have a meeting in July, or July we skip?
We usually skip July, that's why I said August, but now we'll have one in July.
So we'll have a special meeting in July, just for this, right?
So we did that last year, too, I agree with us.
Do we have a special meeting in July, actually? Maybe.
So again, we will do the, we will put together the binder. I want other people to, people to read it, get it out in there. We will have a special meeting in July to vote on the mascot name. Okay. Anything else? We might have a motion to adjourn.
Some, some...
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you all again for your time and your candid discussions.